Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, January 18 Sioux Falls City Council Meeting. Before we read the roll, I just want to welcome PAC 46. Just had a nice conversation with those guys out there. Hey, yeah, can wave if you're on TV right now. This is Brock Keston. Big time, big time. City Link, there you go.
Take two steps forward.
Exactly.
Captain 11.
There you go.
Thanks for being here. Thanks for your great questions, guys, today before the meeting. So we'll get started tonight by reading our roll, please, Tom.
Councilmember Selberg?
Here.
Sale?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
Brecky?
Here.
Erickson? Jensen?
Here.
Kylie?
Here.
Nightser?
Here.
All right. We welcome back Dr. Ron Toddingham from Sioux Empire Baptist Temple. His winter beard is coming nice. So thanks for being back here, sir. I'd ask that you guys would stand for his invocation, and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Once again, I want to tell you how much I appreciate all of you doing what you do. I don't know if you had anything to do with the alliance out there or this new cemetery, but that's been a great thing. I've been out there for a lot of time doing interments. Thank you for that. That's a great blessing for us. Our Father, thank you tonight for the honor that you've given us to be here. Thank you for these folks who have volunteered to give their time. Though they get paid, it's never enough for the things and the time and all the things they give to help our city. I pray you'd bless them. Put your hand on them, watch over them. With all the movements and the growing and everything that our great city is doing, this group here needs help to guide this city so it honors you and rightness in everything. So I pray tonight that you'd bless them special. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We thank you, Dr. Toddingham, for being here again. We'll move on to item five. It's our consent agenda. Any changes there, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Council Starr?
Yes, I would like to pull, it is sub-item 12 on the January 14, 2022 memo approval of contracts and agreements.
All right. We'll pull that one for discussion. Any other items to be pulled? All right, then I look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Jensen.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve that. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightser?
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass eight to zero. Move on to our next item of business, which will be, let me fast forward here, our regular agenda. Item 35, need a motion there to approve that, please.
So moved, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale to approve the regular agenda. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightser?
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass eight to zero. Before we move on to our agenda, just a reminder, public input will be three minutes per person unless it's a final adoption item, in which case public input will be limited to five minutes. And for all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item that we're considering at that time only. So with those reminders, we'll move on to the polled item from the consent agenda.
Yes, Mayor. Item 12, Department of City Attorney, project description engagement agreement for legal services for Village on the River 22-4033. Vendor Fuller Williamson-Nelson and Preheim LLP, amount $150,000.
Council Starr, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my question to start with is with the city attorney, where does the money come from? Where is the $150,000 coming from?
Oh, that'll come through, I believe, the project budget.
How much is remaining in the project budget?
At this point, I'd have to refer that to our finance department on it, but at this point, I know there's the $150,000 is sufficient.
Other questions?
Well, I was just, like I said, I'm looking for someone from finance to answer how much is left, to know there's enough money there.
I wasn't aware that you had that question, councilor, until now, and so we weren't able to be prepared to answer that question for you.
It's, I'll watch how I say it. It seems obvious. You can't spend, we can't approve money if I don't know there's money there to cover it.
There is money there, councilor.
But how much?
$150,000.
No, how much is remaining in the budget account for the ramp to pay the $150,000 to know that that's, there's a sufficient budget amount that's left?
Councilor, there are certain components when you're in active litigation that you can't get into those types of details, and this is one that I would put into that category as we look to resolve this dispute. And so this is a number that's valid and eligible for this type of allocation.
But isn't, how much money is available in the budget isn't a secret? I mean, knowing how much is left in the project budget for the ramp doesn't, are you saying that that is a confidential number, that the public's not entitled to know how much is left in the budget?
Council, it's one of those questions that would be available at any time, but if I'm not aware that the question is here, I don't have finance available to answer the question. And, you know, this, understand that this contract was going to be pulled on Friday, and had we had that information, we'd be able to provide that. But at this point, and again, balancing the city's best interests in litigation, we have to be mindful of what's discussed publicly to protect the city's best interests.
I'm here to protect the citizens' best interest in understanding how much the money is. I didn't get the contracts till Friday, so I couldn't pull them until Friday either. So it's kind of a limited amount of time that I have to ask those questions. So I guess then to move on, what are the deliverables? What do we get for the $150,000, and where are we in the process?
Well, we've been through the settlement component. What we get for that value is, as per the contract, is the services of Fuller Williamson Law Firm. Bill Fuller is available, and they're the ones that would be, have been throughout the pending matter. And as we move forward, they're the ones that would advocate in the city's best interests.
All right, I'll wait till after public input with the rest. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone who wants to speak on this item tonight?
I'm from Sioux Falls. So, Councilor Starr, we need Lamont here, don't we? Because I know everything that happened behind closed doors, and our attorney sitting right here. And Lamont said in a public setting how much money was settled with the city. So should we say numbers or what? So their client should not be discussing what's happening behind closed doors, and I'm going to shut my mouth on it. But y'all know as well as I know, and Councilor Starr, you know as well as I know, that Lamont was sitting in a public accommodation talking and bragging about how much the mayor was going to sit here and give him money for it, for him to walk. So we need to remind Mr. Lamont and his attorney that Mr. Lamont cannot be sitting here drinking in a public accommodation and eating lunch with people and talking about stuff. So if it doesn't, if it doesn't stop to now open up the can of worms and say how much the mayor is going to give him for him to walk and how much Lamont is asking for that.
Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? All right, let's get a motion, and then we can go into-
Move approval, Jensen.
Second. Nightser?
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Nightser to approve this item. Any discussion then on this, council? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
No.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightser?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to one. Next item, please.
Item 36, new 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota Farm Wine License, requesting off-sale use only for common sense, 400 South Second Avenue, CUP not required. Item 37, new 2022 Package Liquor License for Good Spirits Fine Wine and Liquor, 3221 South Minnesota Avenue, CUP not required, pending final inspections per building services. Item 38, new 2022 Retail Wine Insider License for Deuces Casino 1, 1708 West Burnside Street with conditional use permit, 13694-2021 being approved on February 3, 2021. Item 39, new 2022 Retail Wine Insider License for Deuces Casino 1.5, 1706 West Burnside Street with conditional use permit, 13694-2021, being approved on February 3, 2021. Item 40, new 2022 Retail Wine Insider License for Deuces Casino 1.75, 1704 West Burnside Street with conditional use permit, 13694-2021, being approved on February 3, 2021. Item 41, new 2022 Retail Wine Insider License for Crown Casino Ellis 1, 2916 South Ellis Road, CUP not required, pending final inspections per building services. Item 42, new 2022 Retail Wine Insider License for Crown Casino Ellis 2, 2918 South Ellis Road, CUP not required, pending final inspections per building services. Item 43, new 2022 Retail Wine Insider License for Crown Casino Ellis 3, 2920 South Ellis Road, CUP not required, pending final inspections per building services. And item 44, special one-day liquor licenses for KJTLC to be operated at the social 301 South Thompson Avenue for special events on February 5 and 26, 2022.
Hi, Jamie.
Good evening. Jamie Palmer with Licensing. I'm here to answer any questions that you have for items 36 through 44.
All right. Anyone from the public here to speak on those items? Counsel, you got any questions for Jamie on these tonight?
Move approval.
Second.
Jensen.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve these items. Any discussion there on that motion? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightser?
Yes.
All right, that's going to pass eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 45, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located 7201 South Minnesota Avenue from the C3 Commercial Community District to the YO Office District, number 15535-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendations set a date of second reading for Monday, January 31, 2022. Private applicant, Sayer Associates, Tyson Haas.
Jason, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application by Sayer Associates. The owner is Justin Skogan. It's located north of West 81st Street and west of South Minnesota Avenue. This is the former landscape garden site. It's about 1.41 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicants looking at constructing an office in that northwest corner of the parcel.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one? Counsel, you got any questions for Jason here? All right, look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Monday, January 31.
So moved, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightser?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 46, please.
Item 46, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located northeast of the intersection of East 6th Street and Veterans Parkway from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban and the CN Conservation Districts, number 15627-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendations set a date of second reading for Monday, January 31, 2022. Private applicant, Mystic Creek LLC, Preston Mettler.
The applicant and owner here is Preston Mettler. It's located north of East 6th Street and east of North Veterans Parkway. It's about 1.2 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking to continue to construct single-family residential homes within this development.
All right. Anyone from the public here to speak on 46? Counsel, any questions tonight?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Council Starr.
Sorry, just slow. Mr. Bieber, the conservation area, what will that look like when it's finished? It's a pretty good-sized area. I mean, potentially, how will they finish that? Is it, is this a drainage area, or?
I don't know that question or that answer for sure, but I'm assuming with, as you can kind of see it go into the east there also, that that'll probably be a city drainage area when it's all completed.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Monday, January 31.
So moved, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
Okay. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale. Any discussion there? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen? Kylie?
Yes.
Nightser?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 47, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning a portion of the property located 7300 East 41st Street from the RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban and RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban Districts, number 15634-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendations set a date of second reading for Monday, January 31, 2022. Private applicant, Schmitz Calda and Associates Incorporated, Kim Buell.
The applicant and owner here is Rounding Companies. It's located north of East 41st Street and west of South 6 Mile Road. It's about 5.7 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking to construct a single-family and twin-home residential development.
All right. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one? Counsel, you got any questions tonight?
Move approval.
For motion to set a date of second reading for Monday, January 31. Motion by Selberg?
Second.
Jensen.
Seconded by Jensen to that effect. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightser?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item 48, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located south of East 57th Street and east and west of South Rate Lift Avenue from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar and LW Live Work Districts to the C3 Commercial Community and C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar Districts, number 15655-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendations set a date of second reading for Tuesday, January 31, 2022. Private applicant, Van Busker Companies, Ryan Tisdale.
The applicant here is Ryan Tisdale. The owner is Brady Hyde. It's located south of East 57th Street and west of South Veterans Parkway. It's about 6.73 acres in size. The purpose of this rezone is to construct some retail development along East 57th Street.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one today? Counsel, you have any questions for Jason on this one? Look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Monday, January 31.
So moved. Nightser?
Second.
Jensen.
All right. Motion by Nightser, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightser?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 49.
Item 49, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located 736 South First Avenue from the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District to the RT2 Town Home Residential Traditional District, number 15656-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendations set a date of second reading for Monday, January 31, 2022. Private applicant, Aaron George Properties LLC, Aaron George.
The applicant and owner here is Aaron George. It's located at 736 South First Avenue. It's about 0.17 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is to match the correct zoning with the current use of the property. It's been a four-unit converted house for some time.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counsel, any questions for Jason here? All right, take a motion to set a date of second reading for Monday, January 31.
So moved. Nightser?
Second, Sale.
All right. Motion by Nightser, seconded by Counsel Sale. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote on it, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightser?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Item 50.
Item 50, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located 5211 and 5217 North Healy Lane from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the I-1 Light Industrial District, number 15686-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendations set a date of second reading for Monday, January 31, 2022. Private applicant, Sterling Real Estate Trust, Mason Cosson.
The applicant and owner here is Sterling Real Estate Trust. It's located south of I-90 and west of North Cliff Avenue. It's about 2.4 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking to construct a future off, or, excuse me, industrial building on the two parcels.
Anyone from the public here to speak on item 50? Counsel, any questions tonight for Jason on 50?
Move approval.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to set a date of second reading for Monday, January 31. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightser?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item 51, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located 2215 Northwestport Avenue from the C4 Commercial Regional District to the I-1 Light Industrial District, number 15687-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendations set a date of second reading for Monday, January 31, 2022. Private applicant, Nat Ed Man LLC, Bradley Halverson.
The applicant here is Bradley Halverson. The owner is Donald Graham. It's located at 2215 Northwestport Avenue, just north of Russell Street. It's about 3.2 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking to construct an office and contractor shop on the lot.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 51? All right, Counsel, you have any questions for Jason on this one? Move approval?
Second.
Jensen.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to set a date of second reading for Monday, January 31. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightser?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 52.
Item 52, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located southwest of the intersection of East 57th Street and South Dubuque Avenue from the RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban District to the LW Live Work District, number 15735-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Recommendations set a date of second reading for Monday, January 31, 2022. Private applicant, Van Busker Companies, Ryan Tisdale.
The applicant is Ryan Tisdale. The owner is Brady Hyde. This is located at the southwest corner of South Dubuque Avenue and East 57th Street. It's about point, or, excuse me, it's, yes, about 0.32 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking to develop future office buildings on these lots.
All right, thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on item 52? Counsel, any questions for Jason here?
Move approval.
Second.
Jensen.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to set a date of second reading for Monday, January 31. Any discussion on that? All right, let's vote, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nightser?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item.
Next item, item 53, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located south of West 41st Street and west of South Ellis Road from the AG Agriculture District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban, RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban, RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban, and RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density Districts, number 15101-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval five to zero. Recommendations set a date of second reading for Monday, January 31, 2022. Private applicant, 41 LS LLC, Brady Hyde.
The applicant and owner here is Brady Hyde. This is located south of West 41st Street and west of South Ellis Road. It's about 44 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is to construct a single and multifamily residential development. As you are aware, this one came before you guys in beginning of November. This was the original subdivision plan. That will go along with the second reading on the 31st of January. This is the original one. There were concerns from the neighbors to the west about Ronzik Avenue not being on the quarter section line. The applicant then went back to the drawing board, and this would be the updated preliminary subdivision plan that will come before you in a couple weeks, along with the updated zoning plan. We sent this to the representatives for the neighbor to the west about two weeks before the Planning Commission meeting. Hadn't heard anything back, and we didn't have any public comment at the Planning Commission meeting, so.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public would like to speak to this item? Counsel, any questions for Jason here? Counsel Nightser, go ahead.
Just a quick statement that I did talk to the representative for the neighboring property owner to the west, and they were pleased with what they saw. And I'm grateful and happy that Brady has worked up a new plan so quickly and is moving it forward. So I'll be happy to set a date of second reading for January 31, 2022.
Second.
All right. Motion by Nightser, seconded by Selberg. Any discussion on that? Let's vote on that one, please.
Councilmember Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky? Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item fifty-four.
Item fifty-four, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amend the code of ordinances of the city by updating permit and inspection fee exemptions to include veterans' community project. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Monday, January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Sponsors, Counselors Members Sale and Kylie.
Counselor Sale, you going to speak to this?
I will shortly, Mr. Mayor. This is a plan to do away with some of the fees as we do for some of the other nonprofits such as Habitat for Humanity, and this is for the veterans, new veterans that we're putting up. So it's really based on work done by the Planning and Development Services. So the planning fees and permits that come from Public Works, Fire, Police, we waive all that for this project. So I believe we've all been in support of this for quite a while, and I would hope that you would vote to approve this.
All right, thank you, Counsel. Anyone from the public?
Second, Kylie.
All right, we'll get you in. I'm second, Counsel Kylie. Can I, any public input on this one? All right, Counsel Kylie, you want to make the motion to approve this and set a set a date, set a second reading, excuse me, for Monday, January thirty-one?
Don't move.
Second.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Sale. Any discussion on that motion? Counselor Knightsert, go ahead.
Two questions, and if they can't be answered tonight, second reading is fine. Number one, is our plating fees really included? Just for clarification, I'm not sure that, yeah, plating fees are generally not exempted. Maybe I'll let the director answer.
Good evening, Jeff Akoff, Planning and Development Services. You're correct, plating fees are not, it's a plating review fee that's waived.
Okay. Second question, and this might be a staff question, is, I don't necessarily have a problem with this, but what, when we look at these, what is kind of the criteria where you would decide which would be supported and which wouldn't? Is it, is it a matter of the nonprofit is in the building industry? There's a whole litany of wonderful nonprofits, but we don't necessarily give everybody a waiver, so what, because we have like Habitat for Humanity, obviously, the, you know, building, is that the trigger here? What's, what's driving?
It's the nonprofits in buildings. So the Southeast Development Foundation, it's Habitat for Humanity.
Okay.
There's another one, isn't there, Jason? Trying to think who the other.
One of the other big ones is the Contractors Association. When they do kind of work for elderly people, if they need a handicap ramp, that's on there for waiving the permit fees on those, too.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's all kind of in the building vein, I guess, or partnerships that we have with other governmental units, but I guess I was just, just philosophically, just trying to think out, like, where would our, where would our line be? Because we could obviously go down a line of a whole litany of nonprofits, but we don't, so just a thought, so, thanks.
All right.
Yeah, if, if you don't mind.
Yeah, it's those tied to creating housing are the ones that we've looked at, and that's why we added the VCP to it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or discussion on the motion here? All right, let's vote on that, then.
Counselor Member Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item fifty-five.
Item fifty-five, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving offer to purchase real estate from city. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Monday, January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two. Sponsors, the mayor.
Don, good evening. Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. Don Kearney with Parks and Rec. A little bit on the background on this particular proposed property sale. Deffenbaugh Homes approached the city about purchasing a narrow piece of property, or strip of land along the Big Sioux River adjacent to their development called the Crown at Arbor's Edge. The sale would really allow the residential lots to extend down to the river. Right now, they're cut off from the river currently as they're platted out. This is a part, portion of a piece of property that we bought back in two thousand and eleven for arboretum expansion, and so as you can see, it's kind of an odd-shaped piece of property that, that offers limited access. So the current status of the property is that it's really inaccessible, because a lot of it is actually in the river, and then, as you can see from the pictures, there's a severe slope that goes down to the river on the backside of these lots. And so as a result of that, it's not included in our arboretum master plan, because we don't really have any access to it. And we had the city attorney's office review the status of whether it's city property or park property, and they determined that it is not parkland. So the land sale process that we're using is similar to others that we've used in the past that follow state law. The property is listed with a licensed broker. The proper, property has to be appraised. The property must be surplus and the sale approved by ordinance. And a notice of sale is, needs to be publicized once a week for two weeks following the second reading of the ordinance. And the council recently approved a property sale using the same process with some recent ice and rec center property that used to have the, obviously, ice rink on it. So very similar process to what we've used in the past. So as part of this process, we did have an appraisal that was completed on October seventh of two thousand and twenty-one. The value was determined to be forty-seven thousand dollars for the two-point-six acres that is in question here. The Crown of Arbor's Edge has agreed to pay the appraised value and the closing cost, and then following the closing of the property, the property would be replatted. So from our perspective, our recommendation is to sell the property. The reason why we say that is that the land really is no use to the city, and access is very difficult. We won't have to maintain it in the future. The property is best suited to be part of the adjacent lots, so that down the road, there's no confusion as to who owns what property. And then I would also share that we're receiving full value for the appraised value of the property, and then obviously, it puts it back on the tax rolls of the city, so. Jeff, Deffenbaugh is with us here tonight to answer any questions you might have, and with that, open it up for questions.
All right, thanks, Don. Excuse me. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? All right, Counsel, you have any questions for Don on this item? Look for a motion, set a date of second reading for Monday, January thirty-one.
Don't move, Jensen.
Second, Sale.
Motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale. Any discussion on the counsel on that?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Counsel Kylie.
Thank you. I think in this situation, this is a wise idea. As the director had mentioned, it relieves us of the responsibility of maintenance of this property, especially considering potential erosion and liabilities that may come from that in the future. That's it. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion on the motion to send this to a second reading? Hearing none, let's take a vote, then, please.
Counselor Member Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
All right, that one's going to pass eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item fifty-six, a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, correcting the legal description of annexation resolution one forty-one dash twenty-one. Prairie Meadows, sponsors the mayor.
This is just a minor legal description correction for an annexation that was done at the beginning of December. One of the parcels just had a quarter section left out of the legal description, so.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counsel, any questions on this one? Move approval?
Second, Sale.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Sale to approve. Any discussion on that? Let's vote on that one, please.
Counselor Member Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
That passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item fifty-seven, a resolution removing uncollectible delinquent accounts from the records. Sponsors, the mayor.
Good evening, Counsel. Sean Fritchard, Finance Director. So this is one thing that we do at the end of each year, is we close out the books, take a look at the accounts that are outstanding and which ones need to be written off for the year. Those that are above five thousand dollars come to the council for writing off. So you'll see a number of these that are here in the resolution to be brought forward. The first couple happened to deal with court-ordered restitution, and so they haven't had any activity in the last year, and so they'll be written off, but if we, we can still collect on them as needed if we receive payments, but due to inactivity, they're going to be written off. We have several for health that will be sent to collections. We don't expect a significant recovery from any of these due to the nature of many of the clientele that we work with at the community health clinic and their ability to repay. And then lastly, are the housing items. These are items that we don't expect to recover from, to recover on. They're primarily from foreclosures or tax deed sales and so forth, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on any of these.
Thanks, Sean. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counsel, you got any questions for Sean on this? Counsel Starr?
When I looked at the list, sorry, I spoke over someone.
Go ahead, Counsel Starr, then I'll go to the phone.
Thank you. What, what was the total? There wasn't a total at the bottom of the sheet that I had, or?
That's a good question. I guess I didn't total it out myself.
I was too lazy to grab the calculator, so. You know how much is left in the bunker ramp budget?
No, just kidding.
Thank you.
Sir, question on the phone?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do. This is Counsel Erickson. See, I didn't catch the last part on the housing items. I understand health is probably hidden, why it's deemed confidential. Why would the, the housing items be listed as confidential?
Why are the, is the question, why are the housing items listed confidential? Not.
Yes.
They have typically been listed confidential in the past, I think, just because of, I think, federal requirements and HUD guidelines that they've been listed as confidential, if I recall correctly. I think this maybe came up last year as well.
Oh, okay, these are HUD ones, then. Okay, I, I just couldn't remember for that. I just saw two names listed at the top for highways, streets, and then fleet, and then they went all, all confidential, and I, I just was curious on that, so. Okay, thanks for, thanks for answering that.
Any other questions on this item for Sean? All right, look for a motion.
Move approval, Jensen.
Second.
Second, Knightsert. All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Knightsert. Any discussion there? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Counselor Member Selberg.
Yes.
Sale.
Yes.
Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Knightsert.
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Counsel, we got any new business tonight? All right, we're going to move on to public input. Reminder, input is three minutes per person, and on items that we didn't discuss earlier in the evening already, so is there anyone for general public input tonight? Good evening.
My name is Chester D. Young. I live at forty-nine oh eight. I have witnessed everything that's been going on out here east of my property that the city is trying to throw a street in. We purchased our house in nineteen ninety-eight. From two thousand and six to two thousand and eight, Marvin Tripp owned the land. At that point, he was trying to sell it to Walmart, and the city commission was behind Walmart coming in here. The sale fell through in two thousand and nine. Mr. Tripp went out and found another buyer. That buyer came in, they needed to replat the streets. The city, again, called a meeting. They replatted the streets. The engineers that were present were Mr. Service, Mr., Ms. Austin. The concerned property owners were Marvin Tripp, Al Mesher, and myself. Fred Assam was to attend the meeting. He backed out. City commission said, we're going to have, or the engineer said, we're going to have a meeting with him later that week. If it happened, I don't know. What the people present agreed to was Grant Street could be connected to Foss Avenue, but all the land north of Grant Street was to be villas. All the land south of Grant Street was supposed to be a commercial office, office complex with access to Ten Street, and permission was allowed for Mr. Mesher to start the vacating process of streets out there to develop Taylor Circle. During the meeting, I asked Mr. Service, what can happen if these villas don't go through? His response was fourplexes, maybe eight. That was it. Shortly after, the city got, the streets were developed, the developer and the person building the houses, they vanished, the villas totally went out, out the window. And then the city went and changed their zoning requirements and put spaces and places into effect. When they put spaces and places into effect, that changed what the land could be built on. The land was supposed to be four to eight, now they've got what they've got. If you took a look at current city standards, they would not allow a building complex of this size to go into that neighborhood because of all the traffic issues I brought up last week. However, since the city changed all their own standards with places and spaces, I think they should be responsible for adjusting what kind of traffic can go in there. I know if anybody else tried to do this project, the city would make them jump through a lot of hoops. They'd probably turn them down right now. You know, during the process of getting ready for this, I have visited with four engineers that do a lot of development for the city of Sioux Falls, and all four of them are waiting to hear what the city commission and the engineering department's going to do, because it could set a new precedence. The city engineers set their rules, their standards, and their policies. The city engineers enforce their rules, standards, and policies.
Thank you.
And yet, they're not even following their own rules, plans, and policies.
Thank you.
I have a plan that would work.
Thank you for your input, sir. We got a three-minute limit. Appreciate you being here again. We'll see you next week.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. All right, anyone else for public input tonight? Good evening.
Greetings. I'm Davis Okitis, and I'm here to talk about addiction and how we can try to make it go away, how we can heal it. I've got a personal story, not my personal story, thank goodness, but somebody else's. This woman had a hard time getting them going in life. She used to have a job, but now she's got some addiction problems. She's been addicted while poor for about fifteen years, and that has, you know, that's not common enough for addicts. It takes a long time to recover, and she's had a long series of minor problems with the law. Here's a part of her rap sheet, so to speak, failure to vacate, resisting arrest. I can't hardly imagine what justified that, but it goes on and on. Here's more problems that she had, a lot of seeking connection with other people and not really knowing how to do it very well due to underlying emotional issues. Well, like I say, fifteen years can make for a lot of problems. And this one really gets me. How could she get contraband in jail? Did they, like, forget to frisk her and then give her some, some weed and then arrest her for it? Pretty strange. So to try to summarize her experience, we've got trauma, poverty, opportunity, and then you get addiction and a whole lot of crime, a whole lot of minor crimes, really. But that costs society quite a bit, and it makes for a tremendous amount of personal struggle for the, the individual. It's also a failure of the community and the supporting criminal justice system. Well, right now, right now, she's in jail, can't make bail, a thousand dollars unattainable. She also got injured on the way in with handcuffs, something I talked about before. And from talking to this person, I've learned that our jail system both punishes and promotes poverty by charging people for everything that they don't have money for. More poverty problems. I really think that we can do better for people, we can meet addicts where they are, and we can care about them and then make for a better world. And you got to end up on a good note. And enjoy winter. That's it, everybody.
All right, thank you. Anyone else for public input tonight? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Chad Bishop. I live at seven-four-zero-five South Valencia Drive here in Sioux Falls. This morning, the South Dakota House Health and Human Services Committee heard testimony from the Department of Health. In responding to questions, the state epidemiologist, Dr. Clayton, informed the legislators that the number of reinfection cases has risen to four thousand. Dr. Clayton also reported that eighteen of those individuals sadly died after reinfection. The doctor did not speak to the demographics of either the reinfected or the deceased. Department of Health COVID-nineteen Dashboard this evening reports one hundred and seventy-four thousand and twenty-nine recovered cases. That would mean the updated reinfection rate for the state of South Dakota is approximately two-point-three percent over the twenty-two months since the first case in our state. It would mean that the mortality rate among the reinfected is approximately zero-point-zero-one percent across all demographics in our state over that same period of time. A week ago, Governor Noem, during her State of the State address, said the following. First, for over a year, we have offered free at-home COVID tests to the people of South Dakota. Last week, I announced that I had ordered one million new tests to be delivered to even more locations in our state. Every citizen in South Dakota will have the access to get a free COVID test in their home community. President Biden had promised this action but has failed to do so. The state will continue to work to take care, together, to take care of our people. I'd like to clarify that these tests help to diagnose a current infection but not a past infection. Later, Governor Noem went on to say, financially, we see the impact of protecting liberty in South Dakota, but unfortunately, personal liberties are under attack, but that attack is not coming from the state government, it's coming from the Biden administration in Washington, D.C. I always promised you I would protect our state from overbearing federal intrusion into our daily lives, so we took action. South Dakota has joined four lawsuits against the Biden administration's unconstitutional vaccine mandates, and we're winning in court. The issue has advanced to the United States Supreme Court, and oral arguments were heard last week. The COVID vaccination should be a choice, and we should reject the efforts that we're seeing in other parts of the country to divide us into two classes, the vaccinated and the unvaccinated. Unvaccinated Americans are still Americans. We live in a free country, free to make our own decisions. The government does not get to make them for us. I am bringing legislation this session to protect the people's right to medical and religious exemption from COVID vaccines, just as my executive order did for our state employees. We will also recognize natural immunity. I hope you support this bill. So I am encouraged by these statements. However, in order to recognize natural immunity, we are going to have to define it and the methods of determining it. In order for this to be useful to our residents, we're going to have to fund the deployment of those methods, likely SARS-CoV-2 antibody and adaptive T-cell response testing to enact this legislation. I encourage you to engage and support these efforts for all the reasons I have stated over the last several weeks. There is now over nine-hundred-and-seventy-four-point-five million for COVID-nineteen relief in the state treasury. An attempt to use science to resolve these artificially divisive and political issues, rebuild trust of the skeptical public, and bring clarity to policymaking at all levels within the state, including this body, I'm asking you to support.
Thanks, Chad.
And provisions. Thank you.
Anyone else for public input tonight? All right, hearing none, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn us, please.
Don't move, Jensen.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Sale. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
Yes.
All right, we're adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.